We're late. I like to start on time. I have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. First of all, if you're looking at the agenda, the times on the agenda need to be adjusted by about an hour or so. We lost an hour between 6:35 and 7:35 between presentation and learning topics. So just be aware. Those all should be backed up an hour. We're going to...
Be a little early?
Never.
That's all totally up to you.
We're going to move 6.2 Foreign Exchange Students up to right after Audience and Communications. We are going to move the discussion on the School Resource Officers, 7.1, after the presentation of art K-8.
Or after the learning topic? That's okay.
Either one.
Oh, I had it after our presentation. Okay, and then we can remove 6.1 Introduction of Pietro Lynn, and we can remove the Executive Session, 11.2 Negotiations. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
We have a couple of easy ones. We won't be... We don't need to do 9.12, The Long Meadow. That's...
Okay.
And I handed out... There were some missing materials for the... So 9.7 and 9.8 are actually one bid, and I just handed out the material. So if the board's okay with leaving it on the consent agenda, you now have the bids in front of you. And the Williston Library Furniture is on the flip side of that, again, some materials that was missing. It's all on the consent agenda. I really don't like to be late on material for the consent agenda, so feel free to pull it off, but if you want to. But you have it in your hands if you're okay with it.
Does anyone need to take that off?
I'm sorry, what was the recommendation? I was...
To leave 9.7, 9.8, and 9.11 in the consent agenda, unless we want to pull it off to have a chance to look at the material.
And the recommendation was to pull it out?
No, no. Leave it in.
I'm sorry, that's what I...
No, it was a little bit on everyone. There's nothing controversial. It was just late. I shouldn't take vacation.
I just think it's our obligation to kind of look at materials before we vote on it.
Right, that's why I'm offering this.
Okay, so let's pull out 9.7, 9.8, and 9.11, and we will add those...
And pull out 9.10 then as well, because I added... Had to add one.
Okay. 9.7, 9.8, 9.10, 9.11, and we'll put those as...
Action items.
Action items. 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, and 8.7. Anything else? Audience and Communications? Any audience or communication? Okay. Foreign Exchange Students. Right up here would be great. Thank you.
If you wanted to sit, you could sit, or if you wanted to stand, you could stand.
Okay. We're gonna try and make sure that we tie. So we're... It's... Pretty busy in here. So, Jan, I work with the FIS exchange year. I came from all the spaces in the crowd, but not too many. And students I've met in the past few years now, and hopefully continue. But it's been kind of a tradition to come in and just say hello to everybody and have the kids talk a little bit about what I'm like. So I'll start with Janice.
So, like, it's like an interesting year, okay? I had a lot of experience. It was... I had a little different picture of that exchange year, but still it was a great year, and I will always remember it. And, um... Let's say, just that my expectations are a little different. But, um... Yeah.
So what were you expecting?
I thought the school is really different. So I thought it's more similar to our school system and not that independent as it is here. And it's like my kind of... So independent that I can choose what I want to do and not what the teachers tells me to do. Yeah, that's... It's kind of nice.
Okay, and then Natasha?
Yeah, I think I really liked it here. And...
Most students are from Switzerland, as we've heard out this year, which is kind of unusual.
Yeah, and... Yeah. It's just like we have a lot of... It's like a lot of different things. Like, for example, sports. That was like, we're not... We don't have sports at school. So it was really nice to like be part of a team and like don't have to pay for it. And like, or be part of three different teams because there's three seasons to play. And yeah, just to like choose your own classes that you want and that you're interested in. And that's just not something that we have in Switzerland. You get your schedule, and everything is already on it. Every class, and you just have to follow it. And, yeah.
So Natasha's parents were here visiting a couple of weeks ago, and they were able to come into the school. And her mom saw many differences also.
Yeah, my mom was... She really liked that we have a lot of special needs kids. That's also something that we don't have in Switzerland. At a public school, there's just... We... Yeah, there's just no opportunity for kids that need special help or something. They have their own... Well, that's like... In my school. It's like different. But they have their own school. So my mom was like... Yeah, she really liked it. And, yeah. Told all her friends about it.
So what's it gonna be like for you to go home?
Oh, well, yeah, I'm gonna start a new school. So kind of like college. Yeah, next school year. So I can be a middle school teacher. That's gonna take me like probably seven more years. And, yeah, it's just gonna be really different. And, yeah.
How about you, Janice?
So actually, my next five or six years are already set. So I... Next four years is more like an apprenticeship. So I work and I have like a specific school, for my job kind of thing. And after that, I can do one more school year for college. And then I have to go to community. Yeah.
Fortunately, Switzerland hasn't been in a war in the last thousand years. There isn't, too. Quite so, too. Yeah. So, um... Any questions?
Janice, where in Switzerland were you from?
I'm from Zurich.
Zurich also?
Yeah, we live like 40 minutes away from each other.
Something I wondered about Switzerland. The end of the street, we have those red octagonal signs. They have S-T-O-P on them. They don't have halt or, you know, anything else. All right. It's English.
Yeah.
Is that just sort of a compromise to keep everybody happy?
Well, we say that, yeah. It's like a word in Swiss German, too.
Okay.
So, yeah.
They were counting on us to come and visit and knew we'd leave the health front. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Good night for 25 years.
That's great.
Here, anybody who wants a wonderful teenager for another year. And you've still got plenty of great kids out there. So spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Okay. Then the culmination of our essential arts for the year. Arts in K-8.
I'm gonna quickly introduce actually K-12. And this is a small essential art that you're gonna see K-12, because they've been working together for the past couple of years around standards and around common language. And I'm gonna just give the floor to the K-12 teachers because they have an amazing presentation for you.
So I think we're gonna start just by introducing ourselves to you and what schools we're based on. And we do have representation from all of our schools. Not every person was able to make it tonight, but you are seeing a very good representation of our team. And I'll start. My name is Abby Faucher, and I'm here at CVU.
And I'm going to play CVU as well.
Pete Boardman, K-35 at Shelburne.
Karen Lilly, Middle School Art at Shelburne.
Liz Dinas, Williston Central.
Ash Cotton at Charles Central School.
Sarah Beakin at Allenbrook and Williston Central.
I'm Katie O'Brien. I teach 2 through 8 at Heinsburg.
Lisa Bressler, K-5 at Shelburne.
Sunny Sammett, Kindergarten and First at Heinsburg.
We want to make sure that we created a presentation that would inspire you about the work that our students are doing and the work that we have so much passion about that we're in the classroom championing every day. We also wanted to educate you about the work that we've done over these last two years of professional development time and give you an idea, sense, for what direction we'd like to see our program move into the future. Some of these... Some of these screens have links in them. We'll be showcasing every now and then some of that. But you also have a copy of this that came out with your agenda. So anytime you want to reference any of the material or links in a deeper faction, please know that that's a resource for all of you. So we feel as CVSD art teachers that the following slides emphasize the importance of art in education. Would any of you like to read the quote?
"The arts celebrate multiple perspectives. One of their large lessons is that there are many ways to see and interpret them." Elliot Eisner.
So I'm Lisa Bressler, and I teach at Shelburne. This is my first year. I'm in charge of... Sorry, is it adults? I'm used to kids. I know, but I can't...
What is that like?
Yeah. If you guys could talk while I talk, that would help. Okay, so Whole Child. I'm not gonna read the slide to you. I'm just gonna tell you what I see every day in my room. When students come into my room, they get the opportunity to be themselves, and we encourage that as art teachers. It is that one place in the building where diversity is truly, truly celebrated on all aspects. Because as art educators, that's what we want to see. We don't want to see 20 of the same flower bases, right? It's the little guy who does something completely different that we're like, ah, aha! So I just think that when it comes to the Whole Child in our rooms, they are discovering, they are having fun, and they are getting to access a side of themselves that they really don't get to access elsewhere in the building because our curriculum really allows that freedom and fun. Yeah, and I believe we have a link. So Art is Fun. There's a really great article. And if you guys don't know Diane J... I can't ever say her last name. She is amazing. She is one of the founders of Teaching Artistic Behavior and really talks about the Whole Child experience. And her quote, the reason we put it in there is because so many of us really enjoyed it. And it just says, "Play is associated with both problem finding and solving. Opportunities for play lead to divergent thinking and flexibility." And that's what happens every day in our room.
Okay, so my job is to give you a little bit of a background. So in March 2016, the National Core Art Standards were adopted by Vermont. And so that kind of was our call to action as a team. And we realized that if we were going to be realigning horizontally, then we should also do some alignment vertically. So we reached out to Robin and Jeff and asked for some professional development time, and we're granted that time, which has been fantastic. We began by doing a self-assessment using the new standards. And I'm gonna have Abby click on the link. The new art standards are quite in-depth, and it was a lot for us just to wrap our brain around it. They're also really different from Vermont frameworks, which guided our curriculum instruction before that. Vermont frameworks, simply put, focused a lot more on creation of art. And now we have four core standards, which are creating, responding, presenting, and connecting. So our standards got much broader and also emphasized not just art-making, but also looking at art, responding to art, making personal connections, and then presenting your work, which was a bit different. So we did a self-assessment as a team and marked ourselves on where we thought we fell on these standards. And then we went through and did a quick little audit of our programs because we realized we hadn't had the time to come together and really understand what we did in our respective buildings. And that was really informative to help us work together and move forward. And then we also came to some common agreements, and this is all reflecting the work we've already done. So we started with coming up with some common agreements around the artistic process. And... Sorry. I don't have access to our documents. We'll have to change that.
She's just being hacky, too. Don't worry about it.
And I got like started on those. We restricted you. So the artistic process, this was actually an amazing thing as we realized as K-12 art teachers that we needed to really communicate to our students what it is to be an artist. And we agreed on really breaking that process down as a group and then all working on instructing that to our students. And it's been great in our classrooms, I think, to have that process broken down. So what does being an artist look like? We brainstorm, we plan, we refine our work, we seek feedback, and then we present. And that was really the first big common agreement we had. Then we moved on to some common vocabulary so that as students move through the schools and then eventually land here at CVU, we're all talking the same language and realizing that the language of art really is like learning a new language as we talk about artwork. The last little bit in there is Art Habits of Mind, and the K-8s have been working on that and in connection to habits of mind, sort of conversations and learning in their buildings. And that's something, work that they've been doing together. Our next slide is just the benefit of this time together. So it's obviously enhance our professional development, our collegiality. It's been wonderful working together on these standards as a team. We also have a much clearer understanding, as I said earlier, about each other's programs. And certainly, I'll speak selfishly as this high school teacher. It's so helpful for me to have a greater sense of what my colleagues are doing at the K-8 level as they come into my art room as a high school teacher. We've worked on aligning our standards and coming up with common standards together at the K-8 level, and then also having that reflect and move in a sequential way to the high school level. We're working on creating some benchmarks so that a new teacher who comes into the district would also have a clear curriculum map as they come in as a visual arts teacher in our district. And that's our goal for what we... Our future work. We hope to have some more time together. We're also working on creating e-portfolios. So we started that work in the high school, and we've begun a little bit of work around the K-8s trying to balance, you know, the number of students that they see and the reality of that. So still a work in progress, but something that we'd like to work towards so that a student could start a portfolio sometime during their K-8 experience, and that could go with them into their high school years. And then we can really have this really great opportunity to reflect on them as an artist over a longer period of time, which would be really powerful. And as many of you know, there's been an expansion of Celebrate the Arts, so we've included the K-8s. And that's been wonderful for us to have them be a part of that celebration, not just have it be a CVU thing. So now it's really a district-wide event. And also assessment. It's been wonderful to talk to colleagues and work on common assessment practices as well.
So Karen Lilly from Shelburne. And I see a couple former students over there. Hi! So great to see you sitting here. The National Art Education Association believes that a high-quality art program and visual art educators help contribute to the climate. And we do so much when it comes to that sort of thing. Not only are we going deep in our classrooms and really focusing on the Whole Child. Kids love it when they walk by and their art is hanging on a bulletin board or displayed around the school. So we have regular displays constantly. I'd say, I know I've put up about half of my work, if not more, or have students put up their own work. We have the Celebrate the Arts Night that is a big, kind of brings in the whole community. Outside of that, we've got smaller shows in all of our schools, whether it be the puppet show that Pete did at Shelburne recently or other schools putting up things within the community. It's constant that we are putting shows up in the school and in the community. And it really makes... Takes away from that institutional feeling that sometimes when you've got these bare white walls that... I'm staring at... We do murals and permanent installations, all of those sorts of things where the kids really, we hope, get their voice and their input in. And here are kinds of examples here. Most of them are from Shelburne, since I'm the one who made this slide. We've got... They Celebrate the Arts in the top left. We've got just a bulletin board where the kids use their voice to redefine how they would... If they could change their name, what would they define themselves? So we've got Helpful and Cool up there. Kids who did a wallpaper project where every single student in the middle school, as well as teachers, could vote on which wallpaper won. And then it actually got installed. We've got murals that kids helped paint and buddy benches and all those sorts of things that really create an inviting atmosphere that the kids really can speak towards. Building off of that, cultural awareness and empathy. I know in my classroom and in everyone else's classroom, we really try and pull in the arts from all around the world and make people aware that art is about connecting more than anything else. It's about speaking with your own voice and also hearing what other people have to say by putting it out there. It's a means of communication. So we have social and cultural awareness lessons, and then we promote and develop empathy through art. And the next slide has examples of some things that we've done. I will just highlight the top right, which is all of the beautiful portraits of children. That is from the Memory Project, yes. The Memory Project is where it's actually an organization nationwide that is a nonprofit that we, as art teachers, can ask for images from all over the world of kids who are disadvantaged to submit imagery and portraits. And then our kids make portraits, and the portraits are then given back as a gift. And it actually starts this conversation that has happened and really kind of opens the eyes of our students as well as make these connections with the wider world. We also do stuff with kids can respond to what's going out and going on in the world out there right now. The We All Can Do It was a response project to this giant project-based unit that we did on revolution and what is worth fighting for. And the kids like went deep and studied artists that were revolutionary artists and then created responses in response to that. And those are just a couple of examples.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ash Cotton from Charles Central School. I teach kindergarten through eighth grade, and I'm here to talk about the closing of the educational gap and the use that art can do in your schools. We find that we've been reading a lot of articles, but we see it in our classrooms. I could read the slide. I'm gonna let you guys read the slide. But we see it in our classrooms. Kids come in and they are making connections. They come in and they're making connections between their science curriculum and their art curriculum. They're able to really sort of process what they've learned outside of their classroom, come into the studio space, and develop their learning a bit further. There's a lot of facts up here I could talk to you about that are really just a lot of facts from lots of different studies. If we can go to the next line? Great. And then we're trying to keep kids in school, trying to engage. And they're coming in and they're... Where do you want to be in the classroom? Do you want to be in the outdoor? Or where do you want to be at school? So I have kids coming in, not only for class but for recess. I'm sure it happens in your schools as well. They've just got a clay wheel, so they're probably starting to find that out and come in and find that out. But it's talking about creating community-oriented environments. We've got fostering closer ties with peers and adults, creating problem-solving... Sorry, creative problem-solving, improve judgment, multiple perspective-taking, inventiveness, and innovative thinking. These are all skills that they're developing in our studio spaces in our classrooms. And thanks. Keep it short and sweet.
So to kind of go off of that, how does art prepare students for the future? Which is a big question. You know, that's what we want. We want our students to come away with something that they're gonna take with them, even when they're not in the K-8 or in the high school. And so we found some facts that are pretty striking. But we also thought about what happens in our classroom every day, which is practice and problem-solving and perseverance and using their creativeness to take an idea and change it to make it personal to them. You know, they have choice. A lot of our classrooms allow a lot of choice. So students are in charge of making the choice of how are they gonna make this project? How are they going to... What materials will they use? The vision that they have, does that change as you go through the process? Why does that change? And the flexibility that they have. Sometimes things don't work out the way that you want them to. Sometimes things fail. Sometimes you make a mistake. And in the art room, that's okay. We teach kids that mistakes happen, and you just persevere, and you work through your challenges, and that's what happens in life. And so we feel that being in the art room really shows them a sense of commitment. And also, there's not... There's no judgment coming from the art teachers, so we allow them to have that mistake happen. And we embrace that mistake, and we show them that they can take that and make it a beautiful oops. And the idea of expanding new ideas and being creators of something that maybe no one has ever come up with in the world before. That's that idea of, I just came up with this. And did you... Have you ever heard about that before? And no, go with it. Keep going with it. And so that's how we feel like we are creating students of the future. And of course, we need some arts to go along with it. So like Karen mentioned before, we did this big puppet show at Shelburne Museum where we had kids research fairy tales from around the world. And they chose a fairy tale, and then they made puppets to tell that fairy tale. And then they recorded, and then they edited on computers. And then finally, we presented it at the Shelburne Museum, and parents came, and it was incredible. And so that's what we love about being art teachers, is that we can... We watch these kids come up with these ideas, and we watch them start, work through challenges, and finish it. And as you can see, we have some very, very talented students in our district. Pretty amazing to see. And then we thought that no one could do a better job talking about student artwork than students themselves. So we made this video. We have sound?
Yep.
I love making art because through art, I can explore the world and its many different perspectives and stories.
I like to do art and the idea of art because it's a form of communication that is not necessarily verbal, but is not necessarily understood either. It can come from a part of your conscious that you might not know how to express. But when it comes to art, it gives you and can grant you a greater understanding of that subconscious feeling and can give you some understanding about some of the feelings that you might not understand, but you still have.
Art makes me feel free to express myself as a being.
Tells a story, and it brings people together, and it helps us reflect on the human experience and really kind of find new and creative ways to express ourselves and really kind of find new and creative ways to express ourselves and kind of how we interact with the world and how the world interacts with us. So, yes.
And you get to like just create new things and do a bunch of cool projects with clay and stuff that you might not be able to do if you have some things attached. Free, cause I can use my imagination and my creativity and just express it onto the paper. And it just, I feel like it's a really fun thing to do, cause you can, yeah. Happy and I like art because I can be creative and make stuff whenever I want.
If you feel.
Art makes me feel inspired to do anything that I want.
So we do have.
November 17th.
Okay, alright. So we do have a slideshow from the high school of different artworks as well, but I think, okay. Maybe we could do that. That's a really good idea.
We'll move on.
But put in the plug at least.
But we will talk a little bit about this setup here. So just on Monday, Aidan Bundock, who is a CDU student now, but came through our Shelburne Community School, won first place in the Congressional Art Competition. This is a statewide competition. And so here he is with our colleague Tim Duberoy and Congressman Peter Welch and accepting his award, his work. And he and his family will be going to Washington DC. His work will be on display there for the next year and he gets to go as part of the celebration of that opening. And this is an image of his watercolor painting called Midnight Snacks. So give him a little props here. Yeah. Alright, so we're thinking a little bit about what our program could look like. We recognize that we have many strengths, but one of the strengths that we have is an understanding that great programs can get even better, right? And so we are always assessing and pushing ourselves forward as teachers and we want to think about that bigger picture and how that can actually translate what it could mean for our entire district. So one thing that we are hoping for into the future is a more unified district. An equitable experience for our students would include shared resources, this continued professional development. We've really appreciated that time and hope that we'll continue to be able to work together to get to our goals. We also recognize that there are some differences in the amount of time with our students and as that gets more normalized across districts, I don't want to open that can of tonight, but that we would hope that that would be coming to the higher number of time and not the other direction. We are interested in further aligning our curriculum, so not just that horizontal across our sending schools, but that vertical alignment as well. Emily mentioned benchmarks, so we're in the process of coming up with what those are going to look like, using some of the information coming from the state to help guide us with that. And she also mentioned a personal portfolio. These are just, these are not the same student, but we can imagine for a second that we would be able to capture what a student's development would be like going through time, through their artwork and how powerful that visual explanation of growth could look like for a student reflecting back on his or her work. The other part of what we'd like to see moving forward is more integration of the arts, more coordinated efforts between art teachers and non-art teachers at both the building and district level, personalization and flexibility for our students. It was so wonderful to hear our exchange students talking about the choices that they have here, something that we're really proud of at CDU, but I think that it's just the beginning of that and we look forward to seeing that continue to grow and evolve. We also want to think about how we can connect the arts beyond our buildings. Okay, so combined buildings. And think about how we can pull more people in from the community, visiting artists, community members that have an incredible wealth of knowledge and interest in the arts that they can contribute back into the school and be models for our students. Connecting between buildings with our students, whether it's a high school student that can go and do some work at a sending school to sort of shepherd the next generation of artists forward, or even some younger students that can come here and inspire our high school students as well in their studies. So thinking broadly, we are a wealth of creative innovation and we really want to be models for that in our district work moving forward. Please think of us as leaders in that and good resources for the entire district in that, as well as continuing support for project-based learning. So, we're gonna close with a thank you slide and then Emily's gonna put the slideshow up and we'll do Q and A. But this is actually a photograph taken in this April vacation. This is me. Sitting amongst our Italy trip participants from the art group. So the art in Latin Italy trip went off without a hitch and we appreciate your support with that. But we also want to say thank you and put some faces, faces here up for you to say thank you for your entire support of our whole district program because it is impossible really without the kind of support that you've given us. So we appreciate that a lot. Yeah. So we're gonna do Q and A. You wanna just look at the beautiful pictures?
Thank you.
So this is a question Jeff has heard me ask different versions of this before. Yeah, I think in the K to eight sometimes it's challenging with some of these programs, where do we get more time? Because everybody wants more time. When you get to the high school level, there seems to be more flexibility and kids can choose different paths. And what I've mentioned before is sometimes it seemed to me in my own kids' experience at CDU was, you know, ninth and 10th grade, it's a pretty narrow set of choices you have. And it was interesting to hear the exchange students earlier, like, you know, we're wide open apparently compared to Switzerland. But is there enough opportunity for kids in, say, ninth and 10th grade to be taking as much art as they want and still, you know, get everything they have to get done by the end of their senior year? So it just, is there enough flexibility in the scheduling for kids to do that?
Well, it is a scheduling pinch. Emily, I think you could probably speak to this as well as I could, but do you want to?
Yeah.
I've been doing lots of talking. You've got this if you want.
I think it, you know, there's no perfect schedule out there is the challenge. On our end, would we love to have more opportunities and options for kids at that level? Yes. But they're also working on trying to get some of their credits, I know we're moving away from that, but under their belt and make sure that they're in a good shape for graduation. So it's always that balance. I can speak better too, so I can't really talk more about the scheduling piece because it's out of our hands. What we've done as a department is we've worked really hard to try to offer, you know, around the core schedule. For example, in the ninth grade year, as many introductory level arts. We've also revamped our portfolio review process. So if there is a student who comes from any of our sending schools and we, that was one of the beauties of working together again, is we can communicate that face-to-face to them and say, here's what it requires. And there are a few students who take that option every year. And what that would mean is they could just, they meet with us, they submit a portfolio of work and then we have them do a response piece, since that's one of our standards. So they respond to a work of art and do a little analysis of it. And then we meet with them again to go over everything and talk about what their next best steps are. And it's a really great way for us to get to meet these eager art students. And so that's been effective. And then in addition to offering lots of first and fourth block in beginner level, what would a ninth and 18th grader would typically take sections of art, we've also offered more next tier two, we call them, art classes in the spring semester. So in other words, a student could take our foundation level art and then continue with art in spring. So we've tried to be really, work with the system as best we can to make, maximize pathways for students. And we've worked a lot, really hard on that, I would say, in the past, you know, five years or so, trying to make it as easy as possible and really work with students and work with what we have. But it is, it is challenging, especially that ninth grade year. And, you know, I think the reality is they come from K eight, being able to have it all. They can play in the band, they can take art classes and they can do it all. And then they do have to prioritize when they come here and that is, I don't have a great solution for that, but, you know, we work with what, with the schedule that we have as best we can. And I think generally, students eventually get there. They just might not get it that first semester. We do have art club too and a photography club, so there are those after-school options. And we always remind parents and families of that too when they reach out to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, Colleen.
You talked about benchmarking and standards and collaborative work and I know you've probably answered this and I'm just, you know, giving you an opportunity to reiterate something. But have you worked towards providing baseline data so that you, and then some goal setting where a year or two years from now, you can say, we've moved from point A to point B? Or we haven't been able to do that because of obstacles or something? You know, just for example, the number of students who might participate in shows or the number of students participating in tier two or the opportunity to collaborate hours time together? Just some different metrics that us number wonky people might be able to hang our hat on or.
Are you wondering K through 12 or K or?
The whole, whole, whole district. We're all district.
We're at the beginnings of creating that space. The whole, the goal with that portfolio would be to be able to have this growth over time that you can really, there's this theorist, educational theorist, art educational theorist, Olivia Goode, who talks about really taking that portfolio and looking at it from, from an approach of laying it all out. And then we were to take another portfolio and lay it all out and you can start to compare and contrast and take it apart. It's very different, the number crunching, it's qualitative versus quantitative or the vice versa. So we really approach it from that qualitative perspective. And we do have quite a few, you know, the one, two, three or four standards that we have really worked on as common targets that we can sit down and say, okay, have this met this standard. And the goal is in the next year for us to be able to even have that conversation more where we get together with our students' artwork, lay it out and say, okay, how would you grade this? How would I grade this? And take it that way.
So that in aggregate, if I could just push on that question a little bit, so that in aggregate, you could say across the district at grade four, some arbitrary grade level, we've moved from 70% of our students meeting this level of performance to 80% of our students at this level of performance or something like that. And what do the, what does it need for you to be able to do that? And obviously, time and money.
So can I comment on that? So at the state level right now, those conversations are taking place. Emily Tetterton is working with a group of art teachers that is creating all of that information and benchmarking here at the state because the standards are new and the new standards are so open-ended compared to what our former standards were. So if you look at our former standards, they were very specific and they would have almost been easier in a way to be like, 70% of students know what, right? And now all of a sudden, our new standards, because you have this new movement happening in art education where it's like choice and so all of a sudden, like giving, like a statistic like that's a little harder. So they're working on that to benchmark that across every grade, everywhere in the state. And I'm a part of those conversations that are taking place, which we have talked about in our meetings. So we as a group, me coming in as a new guy was kind of catching up to what these guys were doing. But I keep saying, like, why invent the wheel if you've got a group of brilliant teachers sitting down and doing this work right now? So it's just gonna take a little bit of time because again, these standards are so new. But yes, that is.
It's a matter of unpacking in the next couple of years together.
And if I could just add something, one of our objectives over the next couple of years has come up with some indicators about success within the district. And if you could help inform us about what's important about art, what are the things that we should be reporting back to the community, for example? So we're not gonna resolve it tonight, but just food for thought. Help us think about what it is that we can report back on.
I just might want to add to that too. In the sense of the definition of art and our education and the artist is changing, right? Because as more information comes available, that art is indicative in the success of overall learning, especially in K eight, it's really, you're in an advantageous position to start capturing. And so I would think it's a great time to look even outside your core group of awesome artists of how you can best kind of infiltrate the school at large. Because really what's happening, I'm seeing is cross-discipline. And there's a resurgence of art and moving away from that, like that traditional art paintbrush thing, art, which some of us love, but not all of us love, right? But there's so much more of it.
It's that idea of project-based learning that we talk about, like that's why we dedicate that whole slide to it, is that we are already experts in project-based learning. That's what we went to school for. That's what art is. And so we hope to be used to be able to be integrated and enfolded.
98% of children start reading today with graphic arts.
Yeah, right.
That is just a statistic that's not even captured yet.
So and there's a bunch of statistics buried in all those links. So if you want, you know, reading at bedtime tonight, if you want to unpack all those, click on all those links, I'm sure you will.
Yeah. We'll make sure if somebody other than Megan Roy can access.
You need to, it's opening the sharing settings.
I'll summarize. We have kind of one more.
So the question I have, which I think you've also touched on in various ways, as you know, students come to subject areas with a wide range of ability and confidence. And, but I think about how in the visual arts, the product is so visual and often so public. And I'm just wondering for those kids who have less confidence, who maybe struggle a bit more, how do you maintain their excitement and their ability to progress? And I'm thinking, for example, particularly of middle school, as kids start really assessing and judging each other much more strongly, how, how do you maintain that excitement and that desire to keep going forward even if you feel that you're not as competitive as some of your peers or putting out as good a product as some of your peers?
I can speak to that a little bit. And I'm not teaching middle school anymore, but I did. But I teach K five in Burlington as well. I think relevance is really important, being relevant to the things they care about. If we can connect to the things they care about, then we have a pathway in to meet them where they are in their artistic abilities. It's so subjective. And there are kids who, who, I think our job, our job, I mean, I see my job as an elementary teacher to send the kids from the elementary level to the middle school level with the desire to keep going, to not be shut down by the challenges in art. So I think it's important to keep it relevant and to find ways to bypass the things that scare kids in art, like a blank piece of paper and come up with an idea. So keeping the excitement in art is almost built right in. If you, we've been doing this for a really long time. The spotlight is now on the arts in a lot of ways, but we've been doing these things for a long time. And now we're just getting a chance, now that even with these new standards, we're getting a chance to talk about it and present it in a different way. Not just the products and not just the process that we go through, but how it affects the child and what we see. And so I think that we can challenge kids and keep them excited by being relevant to the things they care about, by being welcoming and not judgmental, by variety of materials and, you know, being willing to hijack your lessons in different directions. If, if it sort of goes that way, you know, sometimes you just gotta drop what you're doing and grab on to something that's happening. So, you know, and all these people are doing that.
To throw that off of that as a middle school teacher, that choice component we keep talking about. And what I always say, I had a parent in my classroom today asked to borrow something and then, and then she was like, can you draw me a heart? I was like, you want me to draw you a heart? So, and she would happily be okay with owning up to this, but so I even like, okay, I'll draw you a heart. I said, she's like, I can't draw hearts. I said, well, of course you can. You can totally draw hearts. I said, you must have had a, you know, a bad art teacher that didn't build it up. And she thought about it and she's like, you're right, I did. And really, I think that's what it comes down to when you have these conversations with adults who are like, I can't even draw a stick figure. And you're like, wow, really? If you define it art as being able to draw realistically and perfectly, and I'm sure these guys have heard this from me before, then that is a very limited view, whether it be photography or whatever it is that you head into. Art is a lot larger than that and I know that's what we're going to be pushing. And I'm not gonna force my kids to all be a perfect sign of this specific thing. If that's something that they're really excited about, then by all means, I mean, we are gonna support you to do that, but it doesn't have to be that way. So I think that's key. And Lisa, I think you maybe wanted to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, I have a lot of friends that work in the business world, right? And we're, as educators, we're always like a little behind what they're asking for as employees. And we have a lot of these deep conversations and one thing that comes up is they're looking for people coming out of college with grit and able to take risks and be creative. And we do that in our rooms every day. I encourage mistakes. I just did it today with my little guys. We drew 100 faces, you know, and we did it in all different ways. And the reason I did that was to teach them that sometimes the one you think is gonna be the worst one is the worst one. And I like, and they, I had this little boy who was like, I'm not gonna do that. That sounds awful. And then by the end of class, he was the one having the most fun, you know? Go figure. And then by the end of class, he was the one having the most fun, you know, go figure. And so when I think about my friends in these conversations we have, like, that's what I'm doing. I'm giving those kids that grit. I'm giving them that chance in a comfortable environment to do that so that when they become adults and they get into that workforce, they're going to be the creators that invent the next Apple product or that. Because they will have had that experience in our rooms. And a comfortable place where they felt like they can do that and not be judged.
And if I could just say one more.
I think all of us up here have, we all have one more thing we'd want to add to this question.
To comment on the initial question of what happens if a student is feeling uncomfortable about something? Well, sometimes art teachers are the people that see those things first. Because in the art room, we are the ones that kind of push them out of their comfort zone. And so sometimes those things can lead to maybe discovery of something that they were really just trying to tell somebody. And so we can sometimes be the person to notice that first because art really does put you in a position of, whoa, like, this is different. So, yeah.
Coming back to the whole child.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the K-12 conversation. And it seems a fitting way to end our first year as a unified board. And I really appreciated having the presentation ahead of time to flip-flooh so I could focus on you all. So thank you very much for coming. It was very helpful. Okay, so we're now going to flip around to discussion matter 7.1, School Resource Officers. That's for Dave. Adam, do you want to? This is kind of a continuation of the discussion that we started last month around School Resource Officers. So.
You can come sit at the table. They can just bring that table a little bit closer. Yeah, come sit with us.
Yeah, maybe three feet in or something.
Yeah, bring it in like 20 feet.
Is that good?
Yeah, where it feels comfortable to you.
We should probably introduce our other guests in the audience who are here for the same discussion.
We should try to introduce our other guests in the audience who are here for the same discussion if you can remember what we have to do.
They can introduce themselves.
Identify who's here.
While I'm logging in, I just thought I'd take a second to introduce Corporal Matt Neisley. He was a School Resource Officer with me for the Montpelier Public Schools. And he's still doing that job. Very much appreciate having him here tonight. He's an excellent example of what we want to have as School Resource Officers. Don't raise me up too much.
Yeah.
If there are people here who are specifically here for the conversation on School Resource Officers, you wouldn't mind standing up and just introducing yourselves?
We have a lot of Heinsberg faces, so I wanted to say hello.
Hi, I'm the local community Heinsberg Select Board.
Frank Haas, Chief of Police of Heinsberg.
Joy Givens-Grossman, Assistant Town Administration.
Kay Marshall, Town Administrator.
Al Barber, Fire Chief and Emergency Manager for Heinsberg.
Caleb Casco, Heinsberg Police.
Thank you.
Something like following a group of art teachers with school safety. Nice segue.
Hope you brought some pictures.
Well, I brought some pictures. So the last board meeting was, when was it?
The last month, April.
That makes sense. So my understanding was that the board wanted me to put together a quick presentation about what a School Resource Officer actually is, what are some models from around the state. And then I thought I could do a Q and A, but it'd be much better to have Matt here offer his perspective from personal experience. He's going to be much more suited to answer your questions than I would be able to.
Do you want to maybe just give a little quick background on what your background is?
Sure. I've been a police officer for 17 years, all with the city of Montpelier. Done pretty much the gambit of jobs at the police department. I've been patrol supervisor, detective. I still do the child sex crimes investigations for Montpelier. About five years ago, there was the person who had been our School Resource Officer since really like the 90s retired, and I put in for the job. Been there since. Got a master's degree in mediation applied conflict studies from Champlain while at the school. Kind of me in a nutshell, I guess.
You have a unique insight into world of public education.
My wife's the superintendent at Blue Mountain, but now Orange East. So she's been a teacher and come up to the ranks.
Great, thank you.
So first, just wanted to start, this is Mark and Lydia, two of our co-presidents and our seniors. And this is just a graph from our website. This is such a fun time of year because you really get to celebrate some of the growth. So those are our, Mark and Lydia as ninth graders. Lydia in particular is horrified by this picture, but they can be here on permission to share it today. And I think one of the, you know, I share this photo just to start because it's fun. And sometimes when we talk about school safety, we forget to talk about that school safety, yeah, it's about, it's about taking care of our community. But I think when done well and when you have the right person in a School Resource Officer position, there's also this memory and this knowledge of, this is about growth. And so I just ask you to keep that in mind as we go forward this evening. So what is a School Resource Officer? Fully trained and certified officer. There is a connection, as we talked about last time, between school leadership and also to a lead law enforcement agency. SROs need to maintain yearly trainings. And those include things like control and restraint, and Matt can speak more about these. We also have, it's important to remember that many SROs are part of positive school climate initiatives like PBIS, some of the things that we've taken on in this district over the years. Difference between an SRO and a security guard? I think one of the major differences is the connection to external resources. That's really important to local law enforcement agencies. SROs have mandated trainings. And this is also an important distinction. SROs, while they work in conjunction with school leadership, also have to make decisions on their own and are not necessarily worried. Well, I'm sure they're worried, but do not have to be overly aware of being an employee of the superintendent so that if action needs to be taken quickly, they have the training and the ability to do that.
We actually by law can't be employees of the school system. We have to be employees of a police chief. So the rule 4500 for restraints in schools is different for us. We have to use reasonable force, given the circumstances, but it's a different set of rules.
So just want to also thank Renee and Joy, who are in the audience, who did a lot of the research for this. In fact, almost all of it. Especially since they're in attendance, I had to put in a slide thanking them. Otherwise, I'd have gotten away with it. So some models around the state, South Burlington, they have a model of school year employee. Their School Resource Officer actually does some teaching as well. And funding structures are half the school district and half the municipality. Middlebury, same thing in terms of length of employee duties. There's also a teaching component there. And you'll see, I mean, I should put relationship building under all of these School Resource Officers. This is something that's integral to the position. In Middlebury, the funding structure is .8 district and .2 town. MMU, and many of these School Resource Officers had started off grant, or the COPS grant that used to be out there. And those grants have pretty much dried up for everybody, I think. Is that, am I right about that, Renee and Joy?
I believe so.
Okay, so basically, schools have taken over funding from those. Burlington, similar responsibilities, funding, half district, half PD. Fairhaven, just included that the Cruiser is part of the funding. Hartford does it a little differently. They have school contracts around funding for, basically it's by hour. And they have a rotation of two officers. They do multiple, kind of drive around and drive through the buildings throughout the day. They actually attend classes, which sounds kind of fun. And again, another one, they used to have an SRO, but when the state funding went away, they moved to a different model. Essex has more of a security guard approach, though the officer is retired from BPD. And they talk about duties there, working and having an open door policy, having an office within the building, and that funding obviously is totally through the district. So just a very short presentation, just a few pieces to chew on as we get into your questions. And have a discussion.
How does that work? I go immediately to the money, so probably not the best place to start. But if you have to be an employee of the police department, but the district pays for all of the funding? How does that?
So they don't pay for all the funding. Usually, there's some split there. And the way it works for us in my district is basically my leadership is in close contact with the superintendent at Montpelier. So there's supervision that way and there's teaming kind of at all levels of the agency then. So, you know, otherwise, you're kind of off on an island and nobody's supervising you. So you have to have that upper level discussion about what's going on in the school.
So when you put in for the job of a School Resource Officer in Montpelier, what did that process look like as far as selecting you versus selecting somebody else? How much of that was, you know, just the police department and the city as opposed to the involvement of the school and the administration?
The administration was involved in the selection. Basically, it was like any other, it was like a promotional process. But for me, it's a lateral move. I mean, it wasn't a raise for me or anything that does offer a nicer schedule. That's about all I can say as far as like, if you were looking at just benefit monetary-wise, it was nicer to be able to work Monday through Friday. But yeah, it was a selection process, mid-resume, interview.
But what, I guess, you know, who makes the final decision? How much input does the school have versus, you know, again, versus the police department or Montpelier? And if it's not working, you know, where is that decision, you know, how is that decision made?
I haven't seen it not work, so I guess I wouldn't speak to that because I haven't seen it where it's failing and they need to address that. As far as the actual decision, that was joint between the superintendent and my police chief as far as who was going to go into that job. I mean, the school, holding the purse strings does have power. You know, if they don't want a particular person in their building, then I don't think any police chief's going to say, oh, you have to have this person.
Well, but it could be a situation, I'm sorry, that's all we got. So, you know, and then you start to run into issues with, you know, labor law, unions, and that sort of thing. So, you know, there are some, you know, I guess technicalities, if you will, or there's some things that, you know, if we decide to go forward with this and if this person is not an employee of the school district, I don't know that we've ever had a situation like that. So, you know, certainly some things I think that I personally and probably a number of the board members are going to want to understand better.
And for us, it's an assignment. So that could change at any time. I mean, there's no, I have no contractual right to be the School Resource Officer. I've been assigned by the police department. So if something wasn't working, I mean, the relationship is important between the school and our police department and the community. So they would, I'm sure, quickly act if I wasn't doing what I was supposed to do. I know that doesn't fully answer your labor law questions, but...
But actually, it kind of does because you're not contractual to your school district. You are on assignment, which is open-ended.
Correct. There's an agreement between the school, you know, the school board and the city council to fund the position 50/50. But, you know, who's in that position, it's not defined as me. So, you know, if we didn't have anybody, then I would assume that the funding would not continue to flow.
Based on the models that Joy and Renee were able to pull up, it seemed, and I, you know, just a quick review, it seemed like the larger school districts were moved, were more 1.0 FTE perhaps, or school year FTE and perhaps more funded by the district? Did I, or was I? It's a mix. So it would be up to, if we decide to go forward with this, and I don't know what decisions would be presented to the board for acting on, there would be a negotiation piece between the Chief of Police and Adam and Superintendent, perhaps, about what the model might look like in evaluation piece? And Chief Cost is here, and I don't know if Superintendent Pinkney or Principal funding? Or Chief Cost want to speak to any of that?
There actually was a, I don't think the bill passed, but there was proposal to have School Resource Officers, and it was going to be up to the board to determine a memorandum of understanding as to what the nature and scope of assistance of a School Resource Officer would be. And that might be something that would be interesting to know what that is in your case right now. Because I don't know what that, you know, what does your day look like?
Different every day. It can be, because I'm 50/50, there is a little bit more expectation that I do a few more things for the police department because obviously, the school year is bigger than six months. So, you know, I work with the SIU, the Special Investigative Unit. So some days, I'm working with DCF. The nice thing about that for my position is there's a lot of crossover between students that I'm talking to about extremely traumatic incidents and seeing them in the school. You know, I try to make a presence at the high school every day. I have an office at the high school. The elementary school is more as needed just because of constraints of time. I wish I had more time to be there hanging out with the younger kids because they're a blast. And the middle school, I'm, one day a week, I have a meeting there and I kind of stack my things that day. But throughout the week, I'm kind of in all three schools a number of times, just depending on what's happening. I attend team meetings at each building, so safety team, student support team. And the nice thing about that connection as far as the community piece is a lot of times, we have kids within a school that are having a tough time. And the teacher would have no idea that dad just got arrested or that we were there for a domestic call last night. So there's this one-way check valve of information through this position. Because obviously, we can't share everything that we know about a family to a school, just like we're not going to share everything we see in a school building and put it in a log at the police department. Because that's not fair to a student to have a long police log that, you know, just randomly was talking to a School Resource Officer during the day. So that's where that position adds a lot of strength to that community piece.
And Montpelier, do you just have like a hotline, a tip hotline? And if, yes or no, and then if you do, do you use it? Like, are you the person answering the calls on it, or how does that work?
As far as like, just like crime tips?
Yeah, well, just if something's happening in the school, sure. If somebody sees something, and do they have a call? If somebody sees something, and do they have a call-in system? I'm just curious.
As far as the school or the police department?
No, the school.
The school itself.
Yeah.
They don't have a tip, like, hotline. It usually comes through the TAs, the TA structure, or a guidance counselor, or a social worker. If something seems to be peaking, and they need to call me, then everybody has my cellphone, and I show up.
But not if, like, a student or someone outside the community sees something that could potentially...
They would, they would call our dispatch.
That's what they do.
Yeah, they, or Facebook, our Facebook page is quite busy these days. It seems like people are more comfortable Facebook messaging us with things than actually calling the police, so.
And how about your office, when you're there? Do you get a lot of foot traffic from the kids, and I hang out, kind of that?
Yeah, my office sits right in front of the vice principal's office. It's kind of a awful office, because it's no windows, but it's fine.
It's a really bad office.
It's bad. But the advantage to it is, a lot of kids just need to walk through to get to places, and I'm right next to the hallway, can see the front entrance, so there's a lot of foot traffic through. You know, it's usually the kids I'm dealing with most that want to come sit in my office and eat lunch, and just chat. So it's a nice, it's a nice way to build community.
There used to be a nice flow of traffic, where I would be talking to the student, be like, let's, let's get Officer Nasey's perspective on this, and then conversely, sometimes, students would go to him with issues, and he would say, hey, why don't we bring in the administration here and talk? This is more of a school-related piece. So there's a, in particular, I'd also say that the student support meetings, when you started joining those, made a big difference in terms of how we were able to work with, work with our students.
How many buildings does the Montpelier school system have?
We have three. Well, now Roxbury just joined, so that's a current discussion about what role I'll have, because obviously, that's a very separate community than us, and it's, I mean, it's a half an hour drive, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some interesting challenges geographically, in that, you know, if we have a school resource officer, and he or she is a member of the Heinsberg Police Department, two of our buildings are in Heinsburg, and we've got, what, four outside of Heinsburg that, you know, then you may have some issues of jurisdiction and whatnot. And, you know, I think one of the things that we're going to have to discuss as a board and hear from the administration is, to what extent is this position for security? And this discussion seems to have heated up, when there's a lot going on around the country, and even in our state, about, you know, real sort of security issues versus the educational aspect of it. And you look at it and say, okay, you know, something awful could happen in any one of our buildings, it's not necessarily the high school. I mean, there tends to be more things going on in high schools that may or may not be related to, you know, that may be illegal, but aren't necessarily related to school security. And so then, if we've got, you know, all these buildings in other towns, and then if there is a, you know, a split in the school resource officer's time, you know, that some of it is our time, and then some of it is not, and then the person isn't even in the building, you know, I think these are all things that we're going to have to address and wrestle with.
So to speak to the jurisdictional issue, every law enforcement officer who's full-time certified in Vermont has statewide jurisdiction. So there's no, there's no jurisdictional question. Often, it's a funding question, right? If Heinsburg is paying somebody's salary, then, and if Heinsburg was paying 100% of somebody's salary, then they expect to see you in Heinsburg. They don't expect to see you in Burlington, or whatever, enforcing law. What's that?
How is that working?
We're, that's, we're still working that out.
It's brand new.
Basically, at this point, we've committed to me being on the safety team, as far as, like, talking about crisis planning and all that stuff, to make sure that we're aligned as a district, as, you know, so the crisis calls, the response in each building is going to be the same. As far as response, that's going to be other, that's going to be state police or North Hill Police, because just location-wise, it doesn't, it wouldn't make sense to wait for me to drive a half an hour, when you have local agencies who are, who are there.
So, if you had, you're half-time at three schools, how many students is that?
It's about 1,100.
So we have 4,000, 4,000 students.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
Would you, I mean, it, you know, would, is there a need for you to be there full-time? Is it more of a funding piece? Like, I'm just trying to understand demand.
Sure. I would say, I mean, if I had, in a perfect world, I would love to spend more time at the high school, and have a second person to run more programming at elementary school, because I think that's where we kind of miss a piece to build relationships, is just, I don't have the time to, like, say, I can be here this block of time every week to talk to the kids about whatever it is. I mean, there is kind of going by the wayside, but there's other programs in place that are for community building, decision-making. And to go, to go back for a second, the school safety piece, I mean, I think the biggest discussion right now, kind of statewide in school safety, is threat assessment, right? It's not, it's not the physical security. It's about knowing who your students are, knowing what the threats are, and stopping them before somebody shows up to hurt people. And that's a piece where, you know, your TA structure, or whatever you guys do to build those connections with kids, is where those things start to bubble up. And then you're meeting with a threat assessment team, which is usually your student support team, or your safety team within a school, to try to address those issues long before they become an act of violence in a school. So that's, you know, that's a big strength of the position, is being able to sit on that threat assessment team and say, yeah, you know, as a, as a police department, we'd be very concerned about these behaviors. They might be pre-attack, they might, you know, obviously, this kid is really planning something, and cut it off before it happens. You know, if you saw the news this year, we had the bank robbery, which, in Montpelier, which I was the first one there, just because the person was running behind the school. You know, but I could have as easily been at the middle school, or at the, at the elementary school. It was just a lucky coincidence that I was there.
I'm not sure exactly where we are in the actual, how flushed out this is, and I understand, obviously, that physically, we're in Heinsburg, and the connection to the Heinsberg Police, but I'm hoping that we can, one, move forward with this, but, two, be creative about, because I think what you're saying, what I've seen around Inglewood, those relationships to families are so important, and to, you know, families that are facing a lot of trauma, and that is going to be a real challenge, of it being a Heinsburg police officer, of not having those connections, our most, you know, we have the highest number of students coming from Williston, and so, a way that, and I know we're going to grapple with the geography here, but that we can create some sort of position that has some sharing, some discussion, some, so that that information is flowing a little bit more, so that officers are, you know, working with certain families, and they know certain things are happening in families in Williston, that, because I could see it also creating work for officers, too. There's a lot of people now that have to communicate about, a school resource officer from Heinsburg is now talking to the Williston Police, because they know this family more. How we can, this is going to be challenging, but strategically, think about doing it in a way that the officer can serve all communities. But I realize that's a challenge of, you know, contracting on a certain police department.
Are there examples in the state where there may be two SROs?
Those in a, in a district?
Yeah, Berry City is an example, one. They have an elementary, middle school, and a high school person. Burlington might have more than one. And, yeah, I'm not sure about Rollin'. There are, there are examples out there. Just an issue of money.
I wonder if Chief Koss, if you could answer Aaron's question, from the perspective of what's your experience of collaborating with other units?
I think part of it is explaining how it works right now. I have an officer that works day shift, and for the 40 hours a week that he works, anything that happens at this school, he responds to. So we have, he's got a little bit more in touch. I'm the liaison with the community school, so anything that happens to the community school. Likewise, Shelburne, Williston, I don't know how they do it, but obviously, they've got officers that are tied to their schools. So that's how we do it right now. As far as the tie to the communities, the last thing that happened is a perfect example. The young man who threatened the school lives in Shelburne. So Heinsburg coordinated with Shelburne, and Adam, and all of that. And, excuse me, that's how we do it, is we do collaborate right now. So, but as far as your idea that if we have a paid SRO, that they would magically have all of this, they wouldn't, because regardless of who owns the officer, that police department is, that's where they're going to have the ties back to. So all we can do, like I said, I'm very pleased with what we have right now. But part of the thing with the SRO that goes to different schools, to me, that's like an air marshal. When you get on a plane, you have no idea if there's an armed air marshal on that plane, but there's 300 and some of them running around airports and riding flights. It's just a matter of, it's kind of like a, I don't want to say a bluff, but it's like a deterrent, because you never know if that person's going to be there. But if you put one person in this school, that person is going to develop relationships with the students that, to me, is the whole point of having an SRO.
Andrea.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this is an idea that was, Adam came to a board meeting for the Heinsburg Select Board, and I would say that, you know, we had a lot of questions, and do feel like it is a district-wide issue, and that there are multiple schools, and that those relationships are important. And we certainly, as a board, have not talked about it. We listened to the proposal, so I would hope that your board would be creative in thinking about it. I don't think, you know, we haven't talked about it as a board, about whether we think that it is appropriate for it to be a Heinsburg officer. I mean, it, geographically, it makes sense, because CVU is here, but I think that there are, there may be other creative solutions that we can, you know, and for financial reasons, I think it would, it would have a tremendous impact on Heinsburg.
Well, it's interesting, you know, I came in thinking high schools, so yeah, it makes sense that the person be from Heinsburg, but what I'm hearing is, really, all of our schools. So that person, and if they have jurisdiction throughout the state, doesn't have to come from Heinsburg. They could come from anywhere.
But not necessarily. I mean, we haven't heard, what's the model, is the day-to-day, what's the vision for how someone spends their day, Monday through Friday? We haven't heard that yet, and we're doing a lot of conjecturing with me, anyway, having very little knowledge about this type of work, so.
Yeah, and I want to be careful about the word proposal, because I don't think that we've put a proposal forth yet. I mean, this is a discussion item, and going to visit the Heinsburg Board was also kind of a move to explore and see how people are thinking and feeling. I think we'd be remiss not to be having this discussion, given, given some of the events of the past year, and also, personally, I'd feel remiss in knowing how powerful a school resource officer can be for students and families, and for a faculty. So, as far as a specific proposal, I don't even think I'm there yet. Elaine, I don't know if that's fair to say or not, but...
Well, I do think it's a bigger district issue, because, I mean, frankly, if it's good for the high school, why isn't it good for K8s? And so, I don't know that, I think it has to be looked at district-wide. But that's just my...
Chief Koss wants to say something. Go ahead.
In turn, to our select board, I kind of get them, because we have the discussion, and so, what I essentially presented to them was the model that I envisioned. If it was just an SRO here at the high school, there's 180 school days in a year, okay? You don't employ a police officer, kind of like you do a teacher. That person needs to be working 365 days a year. There could be a model where the district has that officer year-round, and does things with them on any kind of an event or like that. But the other model, too, that, like I said, I kind of get them with, was Heinsburg, it's a Heinsburg police officer, so for the 180 days that they're not paying, the school's not paying for it, then we have to pay for it. So that's literally a $20,000 hit on us, you know, before budgets or anything like that. So when you talk about this, there are different ways to do this. And, like I said, that was my presentation to the select board, is, to be honest, personally speaking, not as the member, well, yeah, as a member of the government. I think that I, if this is going to be a thing at CVU, I think it should be a Heinsburg officer. I think that we've been doing a pretty good job in policing this school without having an SRO. And I just think that if there's an SRO here at the school, we try to work it out to be a Heinsburg officer, consistent with whatever the finances are going to be, the money.
Are there any other questions, students, that you have? Karen?
Oh, sorry. I'm just interested, what did the training look like to become a resource officer?
So there's a, there's National Association of School Resource Officers. It's a, there's a one week, and then there's advanced, which is another week. And that's outside of, obviously, your academy training and everything else to go through. I think then, there's also training opportunities within the school that are important to take into consideration, like, trauma-informed training from, like, Dave Melnick, who came to the school, is something that was really important for me to take part in, to understand when we're dealing with traumatized kids. And it's something that, really, as a police officer, we kind of brush on, but it's a different approach to a kid who's had a lot of trauma in their life, and they may not be ready to talk to you immediately, and may be shutting down due to that trauma. So there's, you know, both the school pieces that you're taking advantage of, plus the additional training from the Nastro, and, you know, and it really depends on the agency and the, and the school, as far as what that training looks like. I mean, I'm a hostage crisis negotiator, that's kind of something that I took on with my agency, but it helps with crisis within the schools, it helps learn to talk to people and learn to listen.
Faculty meetings.
That helps with faculty meetings. So it really, I mean, there is no, there is no standard, right? Like, somebody could say they're a school resource officer and walk in the door with basic academy training and do it. I would say that, you know, there, you should have more than that. And Nastro is a good base for that. I mean, they talk about it being kind of a triad model, right? It's, you're a law enforcer, you're an informal counselor, and you're an educator, all kind of in one, whereas, a police officer coming in and responding to a call is a police officer responding to a call. It's a very different way to look at your job. So it gives you that framework.
Do you, you guys are more student council? Did you ever bring up the idea of a school resource officer?
They were definitely in support of it, but I think one thing to keep in mind is that, though we strive to have a diverse group of students on student council, the students that join student council are in favor of changing the way school is, so just that group of students would be more positioned to be in support of something, like adopting an SRO. So I'm not sure how great a data point that is.
That was well done.
Go ahead, Peter.
Do you wear a uniform in the school?
I wear a uniform. It's lesser than the street guys. I wear a polo shirt. I still wear my full gun belt, still wear a bulletproof vest, but it's a little more approachable. That's, that varies widely across the state. I mean, there's plenty of places that wear a full uniform, and plenty of places that kind of do the halfway. I don't know anybody who's doing the plainclothes thing, because I think it is important to be identified as what you are, so.
How close discussion is that?
That's, that was probably a discussion between the chief and the superintendent when this was, you know, back in the 90s, because it's the same as what our former school resource officer wore.
I'm wondering if the board wants to charge the administration with coming up with some proposals.
I'd like to make a motion to charge our administration, Superintendent Pinkney, to collaborate with whomever you need to collaborate with, to come up with a proposal for the board.
Can we do that as this was a discussion, can we do that tonight as this was a discussion item?
And I will just remind you that the board doesn't have another meeting this year. I mean, you have a retreat.
Retreat. We have the retreat. We can do.
And meanwhile, we could have heard that we might want to move forward with this in anticipation of a charge.
Yes, K-12.
I think that we need another board.
I think that we need another board discussion. I just think it's too important.
For us to have conversations and come up with a proposal.
I think there should be more board discussion before we're at that point.
And if it means a special meeting, I think that we could get enough board members. It's just too important.
What is it that the board, what other information does the board want to?
I don't know. That's why I want to charge administration to come back to us.
Right, so I'm hearing two different things. Wait a second, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing that we want to charge a committee and I'm hearing we're not ready to do that yet.
No, charging the superintendent to work with whomever to bring a proposal back to the board so we can chew on it and make a decision.
But I'm hearing that there's, that people want further discussion before they have that.
We don't know what the proposal is.
I want further discussion before we have a proposal from the, before we ask the administration for a proposal. What's going through my head is, what are we really looking for here? And what is the balance between this position primarily as an educational opportunity and thinking about how is this going to help students as opposed to the security aspect of it?
And I think that's what they can do.
Well, but I think we as the board should have more discussion about that. Some of it is a financial matter. And to the extent that we're looking at it as a security issue, you're looking at more people. And you're looking at involving multiple departments, not just potentially one department. And it would be interesting to hear, we've heard from Adam so far. We haven't heard from any of the K to eight principals. So, you know, again, for me, I'm not ready to charge the administration because I don't think we've had enough conversation yet about what we're really looking for, for our entire district. If this was a conversation just about the high school, then perhaps we're a lot closer to something. But, again, to me, it doesn't, I don't think this is a conversation just about the high school.
But we don't, we don't have anything to respond to. So, we need something to chew on. It doesn't mean we're going to act on that. But we need something before us that we can look at and ask those questions about. I, you know, I don't think that we would have a meeting and make a decision and rush anything. I think we need something to respond to. We need, I need a vision of what it would look like because apparently it's different across the state, but there are some general guiding principles.
I agree, Colleen. I think that this would be easy for us to continue to kind of go in circles around. I'm a very visual person. So, I would love even a couple of different options of, like, a proposal of a couple of different options, just to have a starting off point to actually like look at. And maybe we ask the other principals to come and be involved or whatnot. But, I think having something to help it move forward one way or another, seeing something on paper would give like a better idea of what we're even like thinking is a possibility and like where to go from there.
Right, we don't need, board members don't need to invent whatever it is. We need those with the expertise to put something together, put their heads together, come back to us and say, this is what we think it might look like. Board members, where are you? What other information do you need and so forth?
Well, and, go ahead. Isn't that a, like a proposal that then we can discuss and move forward on? I mean, it does seem like, yeah, like that we...
Yeah, but we need something to react to.
I think the piece that's missing, and to Russ's point, is what is our need, K-12? We don't know what our need is. So, it's really hard to understand a proposal if we don't have, if we don't know what our need is.
Well, that would be part of the...
I was just going to say, that could be part of the charge. So...
Let me finish talking. I think that that would, we don't, we kind of see the need nine, 12. We don't know the need K-8. I would like to get the administration's input to us as to what is our need? What is the balance of education versus security? What would the nature of this be? And then put forth some proposals for us to chew around. And it's a combination of both of it. And maybe at the end, we decide we can't do this all. We can only do part of it. We can't do any of it. We don't want to do any of it. But, I need to know what our need is before I understand why we're proposing what we're proposing.
Well, that would be part of our charge to the administration because typically, a proposal, any proposal that comes before the board, typically, we have what the proposal is, what policies are connected, what's the rationale, rationale would address need and so forth, and what are the implications for budget, leadership, implementation, timeline.
So, typically, that's the way things come to us.
I still don't think we can actually vote on a charge tonight because this was a discussion item.
Correct.
And the other thing is, given the nature of this issue and given how complex I think it is, I also don't think we want to be working on a charge here and voting on something tonight. I somehow, and I don't know what that looks like yet, if we do want to charge a committee, or charge the administration, we need whomever to put their heads together and really think about what this charge looks like and then have that be proposed to the board and have the board vote on it. I don't think it's something that we can just sort of make up on the fly here tonight. I think it needs to be more specific and more thoughtful than what we can just do right here, right now.
I agree. Do we have, we don't have a business meeting in June? We've done that.
Yeah, we have the retreat the first week of June and the business meeting's like the 24th. And it has to be, because the work that we're doing there is not available prior to that.
And I'd like to just add that we have charged administration in the past to do work without having a month between a discussion and a charge. That's not unusual for us.
I could chime in, there's really no way we could do a thoughtful deep dive proposal in two weeks anyway, so perhaps...
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't expect that.
What I'm just saying is that perhaps what you're just asking is for Elaine to come back with, for us to have this discussion about what that would look like. But we could make some significant...
I've made my point. You know, I'm going to move on.
Yeah, we could make some progress in two weeks around framing this, but we're certainly not going to come back with something...
No, and I wouldn't expect that. But for the conversation to move forward, people need to start talking.
I think we could probably make this, we could add this to the business meeting in June as an action item. With discussion before it. But everyone has heard what our intents are, so... Go ahead, Kevin.
What's the board's desire around timeline?
Around?
Around timeline, around actually having an SRO in the system. Because I think that that's a little bit relevant to this. You may have trouble finding a qualified candidate if we don't move with a little more speed.
But part of that, to me, is what's our need?
I understand. All I'm saying is that we may need to do the work to determine that and take action over the summer.
I guess, but Kevin, are you assuming that, you know, we're trying to do this for the coming school year?
That's my assumption unless someone tells me different.
I don't, perhaps it would be nice, but I'm not sure that we'd be ready to do that. And once we have some sense of what, you know, at some point, if we have a proposal, that's great, but we still need to negotiate that with the town of Heinsburg or the town of Williston or somebody, if that person were in fact to be a police officer. So, you know, I understand, yeah, we don't want this to drag out forever. We should make, you know, try to make some decision and move on and develop some timelines for it. But, I don't know that we can sit here tonight and say, yes, we can take all the necessary steps to make this happen by August, whatever the first day of school is. I just don't feel like we're there. And I also don't think that, you know, does it matter if that person started in October?
Or January.
You tell me. I mean, if it...
We started at the nine, 12, and then we looked across the district to identify K-8.
We work all year. And so, I mean, there's no like hiring season for police. It's hard to hire police all the time right now.
Period, yeah.
But, you know, as far as having the right person, I think that's, it's very important to have the right person in the job. I mean, I would say that's probably one of the most important things.
Sure.
Because a cop in school is different than a school resource officer. So, being thoughtful about who you select would be...
So, maybe we'll put this on as an action item in, at the end of June. We'll have an idea then from Elaine, kind of what the need is, K-12, which will help to inform the board and proposals going forward, whether we go nine, 12, how quick we need to act. We'll have that input because we just don't know right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And if you could just add to the mix a 10-month position and not necessarily a 12-month, that's part of the scenario for whatever goes into the mix.
All the proposals are all on the table. We can be creative like our art teachers, right? Does anyone have anything else that they want to? I'm glad we are being proactive about this in a way as opposed to reacting to a situation here at CVU. So, thank you for getting us started on the conversation. Thank you for coming and giving your input. It was really helpful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have pizza at every meeting?
No.
There's always something you can come...
You may need a treat at all your meetings.
Yeah, right. You are welcome.
Thank you all for coming from Heinsburg. Thank you.
They've been working on this for a long time, so it's great.
Okay, where are we in the schedule? This is like the spaghetti schedule. We're all over the place. We are on the learning topic, essential arts. So, if you guys remember last month, there were three topics related to the budget. We talked about class sizes and the intervention framework. And then this is the third piece on essential arts that people had questions on relating to the budget. And this is the data that Jean's pulled forward to see if there are any board-level questions around this that we need prior to doing budgeting next year.
First, just for context, so this concept of year-round budgeting, the idea would be that this time next year, we'll be using this board meeting to be talking about the Innovation Fund, what projects were approved with that Innovation Fund, what the results were, that kind of thing. So, we won't be spending every year talking about little tweaks to the budget, but something a little meatier. But since we didn't have the Innovation Fund last year, we don't have anything to talk about that for that. So, we're still going through sort of our deep dives. The other thing is, just a reminder that the purpose of this is to look at the different things we're talking about for the budgeting for next year in order to inform administration on what kind of work you want us to be doing between now and the next budget. So, with that. Lovely Assistant Megan.
Apparently she has all the data locked up.
Can you go another one for me? Let's keep it going. Okay, just a reminder of why I was just saying that this is like the year-round part of it and that we're in the goal development stage, kind of revisiting things that we talked about briefly in the budget so that we can get ahead of it for next year. So, this is a slide you've seen before. So, there were four topics that we wanted to circle back around. What is equity? That's going to be addressed at the board retreat. We, last month, we talked about the intervention systems and how administration had done a lot of, Megan, Elaine, Jeff had done a lot of work with the principals to get the intervention systems more equitable across buildings. We talked about class size policy. That discussion, from my recollection, was interesting data. We need to have talks about equity and our role and the board's role before we're ready to tell administration if we want to do anything with class size policy. And then this is the essential arts piece. And, turn the slide off, you see. So, this is, honestly, is the one slide I have on this because, as you can imagine, it's a very data-rich topic. I can show you all sorts of numbers by school, by program. I've collected that all from the principals and run it by them. And you could quickly go way down a rabbit hole on this. So, a couple of reminders as we start, this is minutes per week by grade, by school, for the whole slew of what we consider essential arts. So, it's art, music, world language, PE, and family consumer technology piece that Williston has, that's unique. And we just added up all the hours and minutes per week and put it here. And then at the bottom, you can see the total minutes per week that a child K-9 would, no, K-9, K through eight would see. And there's the, so that you can see the total hours. And what was kind of surprising to me is it's surprisingly equitable. With the exception of Heinsburg, the other schools are, you know, within a few minutes per week of each other, averaged. Differences between schools, you can see Williston has much lighter on essential arts in the early years and then heavier at the end. But, all in all, it's remarkably close with Heinsburg having a little less than the others.
Can you explain that Williston trends off? Because that really jumps out to me as a pretty stark difference.
Yep, it's just really the way that the schools choose to spend their time. So, Williston just has, they, when you add up their, you know, 40 minutes a week of art and 40 minutes a week of music and 80 minutes a week of PE. And that's what they offer at the lower grades. Where the other schools have some world language or they have twice as much art at the lower grades or twice as much music at the lower grades. It's really a mixed bag.
It's just such a dramatic, especially from fourth to fifth there. You're going from 160 to these 400 or 500, like...
Well, they don't have like consumer science.
My guess would be that's when they start offering more language classes. Because I know at Shelburne, there's also a similarly large jump between fifth and sixth grade. And I know at Shelburne, they start more language.
And we had a discussion in our, in the budget meeting about this too because we also thought that it jumped out a lot. And I think my understanding was it was starting in fourth or fifth grade is when they do a lot of the family, consumer science. So, they, so Williston is choosing not to use like the essential arts in the beginning. And then in the later grades, they're getting a lot more because they're doing that in that, they're like six or eight or 12-week rotation, whatever it is.
I guess I'm concerned, I understand that, you know, it's fairly equitable in terms of the whole, but it certainly stood out when we had the world language presentation of the differences of ages when kids are exposed. And so, even if in the end, by eighth grade, it's the same number of minutes, you know, if kids are exposed to world languages at five or six in some towns and not until fifth grade in another town, to me, that's quite inequitable.
Yeah, please, hold your thought. You'll be finished, my bad, and then come back. Because that's exactly what you really tend to do with this kind of data, right? To jump in and you're on the right track, Erin. Just let me get to it first. Just a couple of kind of 30,000-foot things, you know, or just, as you heard, the arts teachers talk about the K eights tend to really want to expose kids to a lot of different things, right? They, teachers at the K eights, especially our smaller schools, have some limitations as far as, you don't particularly, it's not optimal to have fractions of teachers, right? So, you may have to choose more art and less music or more music and less art if that allows you to have a whole teacher, right? Rather than a couple of fractions of teachers where, if you're really lucky, that's an opt, that's an awesome thing to have a really talented .6 teacher. But sometimes that's hard to find. So, sometimes there's some limitations between subjects for our smaller schools. As we all know, if you have a teacher of a particular subject who is fantastically motivated and super talented with kids, kids are going to gravitate to that. Sometimes between a chorus and band, that's, or those kind of things where kids have some choice and parents have some input. You know, fabulously talented, passionate teachers may draw more demand to that, which school may or may not be able to react to. And finally, the whole scheduling balance issue with all of these subjects, which is that these, classroom teachers need release time and this is, that's when the kids are free to go do these other subjects. And so, there is a... And so, there is not only a balance in a day, number of seven hours of a day, so every time you want to add something, something's got to come out, but also you have amount of time that you need to have someone else with the fourth-grade teacher's students. So, there's a lot of limitations on this, because that's why it's so very complicated. And I don't want you to take these numbers as perfect all the way through, because they got a little hairy in the reading, can't read it so well down below, but then you start getting into where kids have choice between chorus and band. And chorus may only meet half as often as band, and then band has lessons. And, you know, I had to take some sort of what felt like a fair number of, for hours to make these things compare, but you can see down below that some kids have more band and less art. So, it's very complicated. So, with all that kind of caveats, the question for the board really is where, you know, what does the board want to know about this subject, or what work does the board want administration to be doing on this subject to inform a budget discussion next year? And the discussions that, as Jocelyn said, that we have in the finance committee where I kind of ran from these things by them, is what, you know, what does the board, how would the board make these decisions? Is, should every child in the fourth grade have 40 minutes a week of art and work in that prescriptive way? Do we want to measure outcomes, which is hard in a subjective kind of world, but is it minutes of exposure? Is it being able to draw face? You know, it's really, it's a very difficult thing to do. Is it number of kids who choose to participate at the high school level in different things? That's a passion thing as much as an exposure thing? And so, it's a difficult subject, and that's sort of why I want to have a conversation with the board to see where, you know, what the ask was, so that I can better prepare for next year. That's what I ask.
From the finance committee, we had a pretty in-depth conversation, I think. And what I wrote down from my notes was I was wondering about the outcomes for nine-to-12 year olds in art, music, for equal opportunity for all our kids. So, I think CVU has a lot of different opportunities and has like a wealth of different options that kids can go into, and I think we were hearing that from the art teachers. But I do wonder, you know, as just bringing up your point, like in Williston, if they're not, if kids in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade aren't being exposed to language, I just wonder how many of them can, like Williston compared to Shelburne, compared to Heinsburg, compared to Charlotte, continue on, or what level do they go into high school? Like, how many of them end up graduating? Just sort of a comparison, and I know that it's not a perfect thing, but just sort of getting a sense. I think the outcomes is more where my brain goes to. It's just sort of like, what are our kids doing?
What's the impact of the models?
Yes.
On both individuals in the system?
Yes.
And I think how we phrase those outcomes is important and different. To me, it's not so much if every kid's got a three or achieving on, you know, pottery. It's probably more about access to programs, sticking with the, you know, getting the options that they wanted. Are we seeing a huge disparity in, you know, kids from one town all go on to APR and kids in another town, you know, all the kids who took Latin came from Charlotte? You know, I don't know. Is that, like, it's more about whose experience than, to me, that metric is more about experience and who's in the programs than about.
Than what they're actually being able to do, like drawing a face.
Their score on some piece of work or on some test.
Well, you know, to your point to world language, and it's only been two years, but I've already forgotten the path that goes, but do kids come to CVU from the different schools all at French I or French II? Or do we have more kids because they've been exposed earlier if they started in kindergarten? Are they taking Spanish III as freshmen as opposed to kids who, you know, don't and are taking Spanish I? And is that important? I don't know.
On the topic of continuing into high school, I obviously don't make concrete answers, but from observation, I noticed that most students will take a language through junior year at least, and most students who choose to continue with the language they took in middle school will move directly into the Level 2, so French II or Spanish II. There have been a few rare cases where a student might be proficient enough to test into French or Spanish III, but that's very unusual. And sometimes students choose to repeat French or Spanish I. In terms of art and music, though, I definitely noticed that there's a much bigger difference from what town students continue with. And the symphonic winds class, I believe most of the students are from Shelburne and Charlotte. And Williston isn't as far apart, so that, but there's only one or two kids from Heinsburg in the entire band. So, that could just be this year, but yeah, definitely noticed that more.
But those kinds of trends are important.
Exactly.
You know, that's the kind of non-quantifiable, but you need to have that kind, capture that information somewhere.
And I feel like those outcomes are important. I know I was saying this in the finance committee, because this is what prepares kids to either go on to college or onto some kind, onto whatever they're going to go on to. So, maybe it's that they're getting a job right out of high school or whatnot, but these are the skills, and especially for college, colleges are looking for kids to continue on in language. They're looking for them to be involved with things in school. And just even the wealth we've heard of what music and art can add to a student's learning, I just, I think that's telling that if there's only one or two kids in the entire band from Heinsburg, why, like, why is that?
They might be doing other things.
Right, they might be, but like, you know, at least having kind of a baseline of outcomes to just sort of maybe then be able to like observe and go from, a jumping off point, I guess.
So, I think what I'm hearing, I think what I'm hearing is that.
Wants a chair, all the chairs.
Especially with school give the time over my phone. So, let me give a little thought, and I'll talk to educators and all that stuff, to figure out what kind of outcomes might make sense to look at. And it would probably be a unipole, but a pretty broad spectrum of outcomes so that you can kind of have discussion about what's important. You know, and to your point, Jocelyn, there can be trends, you know, and somebody could have a fabulous music teacher, but they really like math and want to triple up on math, so they don't. So, that's not saying math, but music failed, but we just, but it could be.
And Jean, I'd encourage that. I mean, I know it's more time-consuming to go through those broader, that broader data in the beginning as we're trying to understand what equity means across our system, but just be open to what that looks like, so that we don't drag the process, that we're really looking where the data's coming from and what those numbers or what that information is telling us.
It's a very effective school board to be looking at that rather than minutes in the third grade.
Come so far.
Okay. Thank you. Reports to the board. We've actually done a lot of this agenda, so never fear. We're on to 6.3 committees. 6.3.1 Finance Budget and Facilities Committee. I mean, this actually, the Essential Art conversation took up quite a bit of our meeting. We've got the third quarter FMR, that's further on in the reports to the board that we reviewed, and unless things have changed significantly, we're still in really great shape. We're going to approve the finance roles and responsibilities in the consent agenda, which we did last year. It's an annual action item. The only change is that the responsibilities have expanded from the lead principal to include all building administrators, just given the wealth of information that needs to be approved. Not all building administrators, but.
Selective.
Select building administrators. We looked at the updated facilities plan, and this is so cool. It is, it's all color-coded, what's been approved by the board, what's coming up from approval, what's all working. I'm feeling really good about our facilities plan. It's in great shape, as you can see, when we approve all these bids. And then we had a very interesting discussion about a very preliminary draft of a facilities rental agreement, which really does delve more into the procedures part of our rentals agreement policy, but it was more just to get feedback, Jean, just to bounce, or get feedback from us over what potential procedure would look like. Because right now, even though we still are one district, each community charges differently for the school. Some do, some don't, some groups don't get charged, some groups do. So, this is going to be a first attempt at making that a full district. And I wish you good luck with that. And with that, if anyone has any questions on our facilities committee, we'll move on to the Human Resources and Labor Relations Committee.
So, we met, first item that we really had discussion on was an update on the status of transferring responsibilities for the HRA administration from Future Planning, which unfortunately didn't work out very well, to a company called Datapath, much larger company with much stronger capabilities. So, Mark updated us on that. It seems to be going well. Hopefully, there's no significant changes since two weeks ago, as far as that's going. One of the issues that was identified, though, which is, we'll spend a lot more time probably talking about it as an action item, was the structure of the, you know, who's responsible for what pieces of the HRA. It was originally negotiated with the association that teachers would be responsible for the first 5%, and then the administrator, then the school district was responsible for 90% of the funding of the HRA, with the teachers responsible to five, for the last 5%. We had told that that, we had been told that that was workable. It really turns out not to have been. So, we have an action item where we will hopefully address that. And then we recommended the full board appoint Pietro Lynn as counsel for our upcoming negotiations with the association, and that also is on here as an action item.
All right, Colt.
Mark, do you want to update them a little bit on the Datapath thing, or do you think that?
So, yeah, just quickly, Future Planning has left us, and Datapath picked up the ball on May 1st. In the process, however, Datapath instituted a blackout period that we knew was coming, but was supposed to be for a weekend. However, it lasted, it is now scheduled to last from May 1st to May 21st. So, teachers can't use their debit cards at pharmacies to sort that, so that they, so Datapath can clean up what is left behind from Future Planning. As Russ noted, they have also told us that the way our HRA is structured, and as many HRAs are structured across the state, isn't feasibly manageable by a TPA. So, they've asked us to rearrange it, which we'll discuss when we get to action items. I wish I could give you a better update than that, but right now, they are working on cleaning up Future Planning, and we'll know more next week about where that all stands.
The other thing in the Colt report, the legislative update, you probably noticed, looked a little bit different than it usually does, because I usually get a, you know, pretty detailed summary from the VSA, VSA, VSB, it's the same summary, and I kind of distill that and summarize. Well, we were just saying today, and you probably just saw me over my computer to just see like last minute, did I finally get something? We really don't know what has happened with these ed bills. We don't know what's happened with early ed. We don't know what's happened with independent schools. We don't know what has happened with the special ed funding. We don't know. So, stay tuned.
I'll be back in June or July.
They must have done something on these things, though. I think.
Well, they're going to veto several of the.
Yeah. So anyways, stay tuned. One I know, I certainly will share with all of you, but that's where we are in a waiting mood on some important things. That's it. Thanks.
Any questions on the principals' report? Okay, for the very last time, we're going to hear from Thomas. Kyle, we got you next year. But this is Thomas's last meeting before you graduate.
I'm sure it's not the last time we'll hear from you, though.
We expect great things from you at Bowdoin. No pressure, though, but thank you.
I would also point out that it's Lucian's last meeting.
Oh, Lucian! Thank you. Okay, carry on.
You want me to go first? So, since our last meeting, we have started at CVU doing class sign-ups for next year. Very exciting for our freshman sophomores and juniors, I've seen your stuff. Looking forward to next year. We have elections coming up for Student Council. Both our class reps and our student body president and vice president will be in the next couple of weeks. AP classes, their tests were this week, or last week and this week, just finishing up. So, lots of students are kind of opening their eyes to the world again after the dark hours of studying. And the most exciting news is that we now have a tree in our library. I don't know if anyone knew this, but it was one of our current student body president's campaign promises, was to get, from his.
Class rep.
Yep, sophomore year or something, was to get a tree in our library. So, he went out and he got the grant for it and the money, and he did all the work, and it was delivered today.
Wow.
And we are going to get some nice Adirondack chairs, and we're going to have a very nice space in our library. And it came in under budget.
Yes. That's great.
So, yeah, that will be very exciting to see tomorrow.
This past weekend was the All-State Music Festival, and as CVU has had for 19 out of the past 20 years, according to Mr. Miskavaj, we've had the most brass, or winds and brass players of any school at the festival. We had eight students sitting in principal chairs, and I believe only five schools had eight or more students in general, which was very good. And we had seven or eight orchestral string players, even though we did not have a string program, so that was really exciting. Seniors have three big event, well, most of them are big, events coming up. First of all, this Friday is Raptor College Day, where seniors are asked to wear a shirt or sweatshirt for the school they're going to. And all seniors, even though, even seniors who are not going to college, are not going directly to college and taking gap year, have been invited to participate by seniors who are taking a gap year, asked to wear something that goes along with what they're doing during their gap year. And seniors who are not going to college have been asked to wear white to represent an open future and a whole world, new possibilities ahead. Next Friday is Grad Challenge Presentations, so the paper was due last, yeah, last month, or two months ago. And conferences for last month, so seniors learn last month whether or not they pass. And then the second part of passing Grad Challenge will be next week. And finally, Senior Service Day has been scheduled for the Tuesday after Grad Challenge, which historically is Senior Skip Day. At first, this caused a great deal of controversy. I'm actually a big fan. At first, I wasn't, but then I looked through the proposal more. And so, the way it's structured is that seniors do about two hours of service at their chosen location and then are excused from their classes for the rest of the day. And in the past, Senior Skip Day has been problematic for kids on sports teams who say, oh, all my friends are skipping, but I have to come to school anyway, so I can go to practice. And this way, seniors are actually excused, it's not a skip day, and can still go to their sports practices or any other extracurricular activities. Those seniors who do not attend Senior Service Day are unexcused from their classes if they don't attend those either.
Thank you.
What are the service activities?
We're still finalizing the list, but it's pretty similar as usual. There's one, I believe, at CVU, one at the All Souls, their faith gathering in Shelburne, one at Mount Philo, I believe. I don't will us commit to memory, but should we green up type activities, so.
Thank you. Okay, third quarter FMR. Any questions that people have? Do you need the highlights? Highlights are that we're in, it looks like we're in very good shape for the end of the year. Right now, we're forecasting almost $400,000 to the good of the budget. We're still learning an awful lot about how Munis works and how it forecasts, and so we've got a lot of pencil time double-checking the calculations to make sure that we believe them, but we're pretty confident the numbers are good. One thing I did want to point out is that I did reflect in the outlook that. One thing I did want to point out is that I did reflect in the outlook that the food service, as I've been kind of saying all year long, is not going to hit their budget. I have about $53,000 booked in as a greater subsidy to the food service than the budget implied, so that's about where we are on food service. Other than that, sort of across the board, things are looking pretty good, and that, and by the way, just as a reminder, that assumes, this is already assuming that we've taken care of the $500,000 that was the clawback, this healthcare clawback, that we did not get funding from the state for that piece of the healthcare. That was money that we knew we were saving, unfortunately so did the state, so they took it, but, you know, that is in there, so, I'm pretty comfortable this is a, this is a good outlook, and it's, I'm pretty comfortable it's a good outlook, and it certainly is a good number.
Can I just clarify, did I hear that correctly, or am I reading that the $500,000, the 383 better-than-budget?
We would be eight...
It would be eight something.
Right. But remember, we, the budget did not assume the help, the improvement in the healthcare, which back of the envelope was in the 800-ish number. So, that's why I'm, you know, lots of different directions we looked at, and it's pretty competent.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because it seemed like a big number.
Yeah, yes. It's a, like I said, we, we expected with the healthcare that it would be a significant underrun, it's just that the state knew it too, so that's why they did the clawback, otherwise we'd be at $800,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, food service, it's not that it's gotten any worse, it's just that I wasn't ready to recognize it last time, but I did have to recog, that's sort of where they were in December, where they recommitted to hit the number, I've just, but the number they recommitted to in December was $50,000 worse than budget, so I'm still holding them to that, but I did put it in the budget this time. And no big change to the construction fund, because third quarter was not a big construction fund, but quarter, but next quarter will be. Okay, 7.2, policy. And I'm assuming this is a first look, you're looking for input on these policies?
Yeah, suggestion.
Thank you.
These are not the most controversial policies that the board has, but what will start happening, and these are, but however, these are your first policies in a policy book that's this thing. The Policy Committee is beginning a cycle of going through all the policies and bringing them to you with suggestions or comments. There are none on these because they're pretty non-controversial and didn't really need any changes, however, we bring them to you for any questions, comments, or discussion, and if you find a typo, just let me know by email, don't do it in public. But as we go further along, you will see policies in order like this, A1 through 5, and B's, and the Policy Committee will also start pulling out some individual policies that may need updating before we get to them in the long run.
So, they'll come as a discussion matter, one month, and then the next month?
And the next one for action.
I wonder if it's worth highlighting A2 and the way that this board will interact with policy, just as a reminder, development and adoption.
I'm not gonna, I haven't, so if this isn't exactly what it says in the policy, excuse me, but however, it just highlights that the board creates a policy, the board creates a committee to help with creation of that policy, and the comments run through that board and then are brought to you for discussion.
And then there might be changes, might be an ask to go back to the committee, but the board has an opportunity to do a reading a month before adoption.
Sure.
So, any comments, questions, burning desire, kind of like financial roles and responsibilities? Fascinating.
Russ will let you know when they're controversial.
We're working on getting...
We'll highlight them in red.
Including tomorrow morning's meeting, we'll be bringing some more fun ones, so...
Okay, well, talking about fun, let's move on to action matters. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to change to HRA provision and CBA?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
So, this is what Russ was alluding to in the Human Resources Committee meeting. Our current HRA structure, as negotiated, was both the support staff and the teachers creates an HRA that funds maximum out-of-pocket costs based on the gold CDHP plan that was put forth by DHI. It's basically, if you took for a family plan $5,000, the teacher would be responsible for the first 250, we put in $4,500 to cover those costs, and then the teacher is responsible for the last 250. That's how it's currently structured. We were told that electronically and through our cards, and that the HRA could be managed this way, that has turned out, as can be seen through my reports over the past few months, that's not really true, and our new company has told us that if you really want it to work smoothly and you want to keep your employees able to use their debit cards, that those first dollars really need to go away. If you, it will make things run smoother if the HRA is structured our dollars first, $4,500, and the teacher's responsibility is moved to the back of the $500.
If I could interject, it almost, if I understood it correctly, it almost didn't matter as much whose dollars were first, but the split was really unworkable, so to have some of somebody's dollars first, and then somebody else's, and then, you know, the first groups, no matter whose it was, that split was really a problem.
And we thought it was brilliant when we negotiated it.
It seemed like a good idea at the time.
As did half the state. And the HR Committee, Russ, Colleen, we brought in to talk about it as well, are recommending that this change be made. And yes, there is a cost associated with this, probably, that that first 250 is, most people are going to use that money, but I think, as Russ put it when we were discussing it, we're buying some goodwill back from our employees. This healthcare matter has been, to call it a disaster is to put it lightly, there are people currently getting collection notices from providers and whatnot. It's, I think it's not that hard.
I think Colleen and I felt that this was the best, most expedient way to try to move past this, to allow Mark and his staff to get back to doing their jobs, that certainly, you know, to try to go back to the union at this point and negotiate something, you know, maybe make their 10% first instead of ours, was really going to be challenging and not a place we wanted to be, and that the financial risk to the district was maybe 80 grand, but probably something less than that.
Is that this year and next year combined, or just this year?
I think it's a combination.
It would be the fiscal year. So, the plan year runs January to January, so a plan year.
Okay.
And I've used more conservative numbers than Russ has. I'd say $100,000 is probably a good number.
For this fiscal year?
For this plan year.
Possible.
But, yeah, so it would be split over fiscal years.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Calendar year versus fiscal year.
Yeah. Got to get everything on one date.
Does anyone have any questions, or...
Actually, I do have one. I assume you've had some conversation with the Association. The Association is completely on board. As one would expect, yes, just so that works.
We were in complete agreement that this was the most expedient way to move things forward, tidy things up, and fairness to everybody.
All those in favor signify, saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Okay. Can I just throw in that, I mean, maybe I just kind of pretend I'm doing the same thing, but Mark has done a really remarkable job of corralling this whole thing, especially since he's been on the job now for one year and about, what, 10 days? It's really consumed him and his staff, and he has done a really remarkable job of keeping everybody on the box on this, so thank you, Mark, for...
Our staff, my staff that was here when I got here are amazing people, and they...
And they're still here. That's good leadership. That's good leadership. Mark, who needs to sign this?
So...
Entire board?
No, just Lynn.
Just Lynn.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve switching the appointments of clerk and assistant clerk from Director Martin to clerk and Director Bowen to assistant clerk?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
This, in terms of discussion, this was decided upon between Directors Martin and Bowen, so they're okay with this.
Sounds like Rowan and Mark.
It really does. I was going to make a comment about that.
We could put an act together, maybe, and see what we can do.
Any other discussion?
Thomas and Kyle.
Why is Rowan and Mark?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve Pietro Lynn as counsel for upcoming negotiations?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 8.4, do I have a motion to award the ABS sidewalk repair bid?
ABS and CVU together.
Oh, they're together, sorry. ABS and CVU sidewalk repair bid.
So moved, second.
Discussion?
Sorry they were late, but I have to tell you that Kurt is struggling to get three bids for some of our projects, so he's really reaching out to shake the trees. There's a lot of construction going on in Jinton County right now, and no one wants to be tied down doing $50,000 with the concrete work, but the other thing you should notice, though, is that we did bid CVU and Allenbrook together, which is a step in the right direction.
Appreciated. Yeah. Okay. We have, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion to award the Williston Construction Project Library Furniture Bid to Robert Lord?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You skipped 910.
I'm getting there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm glad you have money for furnishings.
Yes.
Especially in the library.
Do I have a motion to approve the construction fund projects as outlined by the COO?
It's all moved.
Second?
This was only pulled because I did have, I forgot the fire alarm replacement project in Charlotte, and we want to get that moving, so, yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Wait, wait, can I take my bus out, because we're doing bus bids.
Oh.
Yeah, that's your bus. Go ahead.
I just had a question. Who's Hannah Pinkney?
She's my daughter.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then.
Well, she's half as good as you are, I'm sure she'll be an excellent job.
Thank you, Ray.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm just going to note, we are right on time. Okay.
Good job, Lynn.
Next, next meeting date, we have our retreat, June 8th, 8 to 4 at Vermont National. Are we having committee meetings in June?
I don't think so.
I don't think there's a need for committee meetings. Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, off we go.